It's 8:30, I'll call this morning's meeting to order. I'll look for an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone here wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Moving forward, I'll look for approval of the payments of bills and vouchers.
Move to second.
We have a motion to approve as presented and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Looking for approval of the minutes of the March 13th meeting.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then moving into the minutes of the March 20th meeting.
Move approval.
Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have some employee recognitions today. Alright. So today we have Dave Sunday. Dave, come on over here. Dave, this is presented in grateful recognition today of 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much for being here. Do you have a supervisor who's going to speak?
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are. Sorry. They didn't write it on my cheat sheet.
I moved after Scott.
Alright, we'll do it, both of them. Scott, this is presented to you in grateful recognition of 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you for all you've done.
You can come back up here, Dan. I'll be brief. Twenty years ago, that's a long time to be here at the courthouse. He has been here since this was Judge Weir's chambers and her courtroom. So to be providing service as one of the faces of our courthouse where, you know, 70, 80 percent of the people that come into the courthouse aren't really having the best days. And to be able to provide service and to make them feel, you know, welcomed when they come in and out, that's quite, that's quite an honor. So congratulations for 20 years. Scott, 25. That's a long time. So he started as a, as night patrol, then went to K-9, day patrol, and now for the last year he's been in the warrants and transports where, as you know, our overcrowding issue in the jail, he's part of four that have logged 150,000 miles of transports this past year. And kind of in baseball where you have a pitcher that gobbles up innings, he's my pitcher because he gobbles up miles. So he's done phenomenal job and I really appreciate him. Thank you guys.
Christina, this plaque is presented to you today in grateful recognition of 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much.
It's microphone and everything. It's new. Chris has been in my unit for quite a long time. She started out in income maintenance and we were lucky enough to pull her over into my unit. She is a support enforcement aide and is kind of the person that starts all our cases. So we get a referral that's got really ambiguous information. She starts digging nationwide. Court orders, birth records, other states that are involved with cases already, that type of thing. So she's working really hard behind the scenes to gather this information so by the time it gets to a worker, they can take the case and run with it. They don't have to go find the backstory. So what she does in our case really makes the office work well and really makes everybody else's jobs a lot easier. So we're lucky to have her.
Thank you, Chris. Is it Anna? Sorry.
Is it Anna or Dan?
Anna. Anna, this plaque is presented to you in grateful recognition for all you've done with 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna, so what do I say about Anna? So first, Anna has actually been here for almost 40 years. Anna started working with us in the 70s when we had migrant populations come. And so she came and worked with us seasonally for about 15 years and then came on full time. So wow. And look how beautiful this is. Forty years at the county and you're looking like this. Nice job. So Anna works in one of the most challenging spots in our agency, to be honest with you. Our income maintenance unit has a huge volume of folks coming in and they're coming into our agency with a variety of issues and difficulties. And Anna has always been that smiling face at the county. When I started as the director and I observed down in that unit, the way Anna treated the folks that came to our agency, they knew her face. They, it was just a nice, nice presence for our agency. So thank you so much for that. When Anna decided she was going to do a little more tasks behind the scenes, we were all a little worried about that because we wanted her face right there. And she has done a lot of training over the years with all the turnover that's happened in that unit. So thank you so much for that. So she's been an asset for sure.
Susan Roll? Susan, this plaque is presented to you today in grateful recognition for 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much.
Well, Susan was one of the first people hired as part of our centralized accounting when we changed how the auditor's office was laid out. And she has a unique role right now where she not only works closely with auditor's office people, but she also works closely with social services people. And she does a great job and she plays a critical role in gathering the data that you use to create your social service budget. So we want to thank her for her great job doing that. And I'll let Rhonda.
Yes, Susan gets two of us. And you know, I always like to take credit for some of these nice reports that we have and all this data, but it's really Susan. Yeah. And she can make it all look so pretty. She's got skills with color and graphs and charts and so it's Susan. And once a year you typically, as the county board, get a letter from our State Department of Human Services about different reports that we submit. And we have always gotten this congratulatory letter thanking us for submitting all of our fiscal and financial reports on time. It represents 30-some reports and they're all in order. And the letter makes it seem like it's me, but it's Susan. And it's our staff and all the staff that work in the auditor's office making sure all that stuff gets done and submitted and on time. So we really appreciate you at Social Services for sure. She interacts with all of our staff, so she has to deal with all those different personalities. And social workers and auditors don't always mix. We're kind of, you know, nebulous and she's no detail. So we have our interactions for sure, but she works great with our staff. So thank you.
Well, what a wide variety of institutional knowledge that is definitely present with those employees. Thank you very much. Let it clear out a little bit and then we'll do our next one. Alright, our 8:35 item is a request to review violations at Lake 15. Citizen Brian Burnett has requested. You can come up and sit at the desk, Brian. Good morning. Alright, we have the letter that you presented with several questions, but I'll let you lead off your discussion.
Well, I'll start with number one, I guess.
Good morning, yes, okay.
Wild lots 8, 9, 15, 16, probably 17, building permits were given without stormwater management, shoreline management, environmental protection management laws.
Okay. So I have staff here, but I also, because you presented these questions before, they were able to answer some of those. So if you'd like, would you like me to respond or do you want staff to respond on this?
Well, I just want to know why they weren't, why the laws weren't followed.
Well, we'll go in order of that then. So the response is that the county's stormwater management ordinance does not specifically apply to these lots, as the ordinance by itself only applies to the urbanized area of the county. The subdivision is not within the county's urbanized area. The state has stormwater management laws, Minnesota Administrative Rules Chapter 7090, but those are enforced by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, not the county, by the Rule 7090 dot 0080. The state's stormwater management laws are not triggered unless there's a land disturbance of over one acre or more and that it was determined last June 2017 by Eric Jones from Houston Engineering that there's not been one, more than one acre of disturbance. So Minnesota Pollution Control declined to get involved. As for environmental protection management laws, we're, if we're referring to the Environmental Protection Act, it's a federal law, only enforceable by a federal agency. And I believe you've contacted those federal agencies, correct?
Well, we have, but they've said it's the county's jurisdiction. They cannot get involved. Same with Minnesota Pollution Control.
Well, that specifically falls under that umbrella, so that's why we can't do that. The county has adopted a shoreline management ordinance, Clay County Development Chapter 5B, which do apply and they're always considered when the applications are applied for and approved or denied building permits, including the building permits that you referenced in these specifically. So based on a request made by Sunset Beach residents during a meeting with Clay County on July 27th, 2017, lots 15, 16, and 17 have been investigated to determine whether any Clay County's shoreline management ordinances have been violated. In a letter dated September 28th, 2017, that property owner was advised of alleged shoreline management ordinance violations in order to remedy the violation based upon suggestions made by the Buffalo Red Watershed District and Houston Engineering. The county indicated that the ordinance violations would be remedied if the recommendations of Houston Engineers' report was followed, the drainage flow improvements. On October 16th, 2017, Houston Engineering conducted a field review of the Playa driveway and later on November 7th, 2017, advised Clay County that the drainage flow improvements had been made. Therefore, Clay County had considered the previous violations on 15, 16, and 17 remedied and no new violations have been alleged. So that's the first question.
You said the Buffalo River watershed?
Correct.
They have not done anything on it.
They, on the 16th of October and the 7th of November, had been there.
Yeah, they haven't talked Bruce Albright and he's said he's not, he has nothing to do with shoreline management and he's not going to have anything to do with shoreline management. And the county's responsible for anything under one acre. As you were saying, Minnesota put anything over an acre, the county's responsible from 10 cubic yards to an acre.
Okay, our county representation is here if they'd like to speak on that specific statement. Tim, you can come up. He's claiming that because it's under an acre that it's county issue, not over an acre.
Well, if somebody knew the law here and studied it, they'd understand that you need a-
That's keeping a civil conversation, Mr. Burnett. I just, we're researching really hard your claims and we're trying to find a solution.
Well, I need to, I need to talk a little too though.
That's fine, but you asked one question. You asked us to look into it. Now here, Mr. Magnuson will answer your further question.
Shoreline management regulations do apply and they do have some stormwater provisions to them. One of the issues that has been raised is, well, a couple of the issues that have been raised are permits for movement of material and also for vegetative removal. Shoreline management regulations stipulate that if you're doing construction, that the material movement and the removal of vegetation does not need to be separately permitted as part of that permitting for a construction project. So that's what was done out there for most, for all practical purposes.
Okay.
The driveway and the tree removal and everything else were all part of another construction project and therefore don't require or didn't require separate permitting.
Well, that is not true. It's absolutely not true, Tim. Where did you come up with that?
It stipulates that in our ordinance.
Could I see a copy of that?
I can get you a-
Think you brought it?
We have a sheet-
You cannot just let people tear up land. There shouldn't have been one tree cut down there.
We have the sheet with the response on these questions.
Well, I need the law. I want, well, we've been doing this for three years. We need facts.
Okay, I did give you some statutes in this previous response. We have some more questions that you had. So let's go through it and I'll be happy to supply you with everything.
What permitting process does Tim use when he's giving out a permit? There's a process that needs to be step by step before a permit is given? Especially with stormwater management?
If we can talk about a specific building permit quickly, I mean, you can just give the overview, what happens?
The permitting process, application is made. The application comes to us generally as a site plan of what's being proposed. We review that. If there's anything that we have questions about, we go back to the applicant, inquire there. If there are changes that need to be made, we work with the applicant to make those changes so the permit application can be granted and then the permit is issued.
Great. And then from the watershed's perspective, it's much of the same. And I have the watershed district permit approval for what Bruce Bingham applied for that culvert. So I mean, it's, it's-
Will you read the note at the end, please?
"The permit does not relieve the applicant of any requirements for other permits which may be necessary for township, city, state, or federal agencies." Is that why? But then-
The permit's worthless.
So then you're saying all permits are worthless?
If they don't have state and federal law applied to them, yes.
Well, there's documentation behind it that adds into it. So I mean, it's not just one-
Where's that at, please? Because it's not on our paperwork.
It's all, this is your file. It's all in here.
Well, that was the last, the last, what you just read was the last page of the application of that permit.
Well, it looks like the first, the first for what I have. Alright, so your second question is what?
Well, I'm still on the first one because you can't just come in and dig culverts in.
I'm not, I'm not just digging a culvert. You have a township that has gone through the proper requirements. If you have a question on the culvert, that is specifically a watershed issue. And part of this conversation's problem is that we're trying to meld everything, all the different agencies into the county. And it's a multi-pronged issue. So let's talk about the county issues.
Well, county's issue is they're, they're giving out permits and letting people just do whatever they want without state and federal law being applied.
You know, I think we can, if you think that that's the case, you have the civil right to retain counsel and take that further. From ours perspective, it's been significantly vetted out to deem that that's not the case.
Did you review any of the permits that Tim has given out?
Yes.
And do you feel they're, they're significant? That they say a permit such as a family, there's no elevations, there's no nothing on these permits. He's given permits with somebody, taken an overhead picture of the land and just give them a permit. There's no vetting on nothing.
Do you want to jump down to a different, different question? I think you've had a quick-
Well, you just asked me. No, we're still on the same one.
No, I think that one melds-
The permitting process has not been followed whatsoever on any of these laws.
Both our county administrator and attorney have looked at these permits specifically and has anything risen out that is not cohesive with how we do any other permits?
Madam Chair, I can say that I think Mr. Burnett is upset about federal and/or state laws not being followed.
Yeah, well, it's the county's-
And this is the county level. So I don't review permits to look for compliance with state or federal law. That's not within my purview. And so that's where we have a big disconnect. You think it should be and the county says, we enforce the county law and the county ordinances. And so I don't know that we're ever going to agree on that in terms of what law applies. If state law applies, then the Pollution Control Agency becomes involved or they contact Mr. Magnuson. We've had that happen many times where they contact us and say, we're concerned about a particular project. And so then that is taken into account when we're doing the permitting process. But we can't just pick up the Environmental Protection Act of 1972 and say, oh, right here, this is our concern. That's not where the county's enforcement remedy lies. So if we think there's an issue with a county ordinance, that is what's explored and made sure that it's complied with.
Well, it's absolutely county ordinance because county ordinance is state and federal.
No, the county ordinance is the county ordinance. We pass it by the county, by this board passes the county ordinance. Just as a township can pass an ordinance in stricter-
Well, the county ordinance is exact same with a little different language in it. But for you to say that we do not get these protections because we're outside the urban area is ludicrous.
No, that's not what I said. I said, we don't enforce the state or federal law. We enforce the county ordinance.
Well, it's the same thing though, man.
No, it's not. Commissioner Campbell has a question.
I have a question for Mr. Magnuson. Tim, the, the state stormwater management laws in the, with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency talks about disturbing an acre or more. So if there's a, a permit process that's brought to you and you recognize that there is more than an acre being disturbed, do you then notify Minnesota Pollution Control? Is that part of the process?
We don't necessarily notify MPCA directly. What we do is we tell the applicant that they need to contact the MPCA-
Okay.
-and get a construction stormwater management permit from them-
Okay.
-before the project proceeds.
So if, if somebody goes and comes to you and they're disturbing over an acre, because that is then a different jurisdiction to do.
Right, the acre threshold is a, I guess, I don't know if it's a state threshold or a federal threshold, but the one acre threshold does throw it into the lap of the MPCA for their enforcement review. Thank you.
So that answers the number two question in terms of implementing state violence.
Well, you're getting paid state grants, right?
Yeah, we can talk about that. We did research on that.
Well, I mean, that's a question too, but I'm still, here's, here's one of the county ordinance on shoreline management, 10 yards and anything over 10 yards. All these violations are created by the incompetence of somebody that's supposed to be looking at this and seeing these violations before they happen, not after they happen.
Madam Chair.
It doesn't do any good three years later.
Madam Chair, there was two permits that were asked about here. And I think the Schreck and the Skell, Skell Ru?
Scott Ru.
Permits, Tim had given me those and I did review those. Those were both approved by the Board of Adjustments, I believe, because of setbacks and the size of the lot. So those permits have been reviewed and they were reviewed by me and I know by our counsel before they went to Board of Adjustment. So yes, we did review those. And I guess for clarity, what, what ground are we talking about here? What is the violation that is alleged?
Unbuildable lots.
Yeah, which one? Or what?
Number eight and nine.
Which ones are those?
The ones that are about-
This is eight and nine.
Eighteen thousand square feet, minimum on a lake is forty thousand.
So those are, those are both, from what I got, Board of Adjustment approved those, both of those, correct?
Board of Adjustment approved variances on both of those.
Does the Commissioner of Natural Resources?
The Commissioner doesn't make a habit of putting every-
The Commissioner, the Commissioner of Natural Resources, well, Minnesota DNR is informed when there are variances in the shoreline district, they're informed prior to the public hearing. They need 10 days' notice as required by statute. So we notify them, we take their input into account. But these lots are considered, this, this plat was done in 1972 or 1973. And any lot in here is considered a lot of record and can be constructed on as long as it can comply as closely as possible with building setbacks, sewer setbacks and that sort of thing. If they can't comply, they do have the right to apply for variance to setbacks either from the water, property lines right away for either structure or septic systems. I guess the county is, is not in the habit of saying, your lot doesn't currently meet the standards that would be required now, it's considered unbuildable. There are provisions in our ordinance for lots of record and their buildability.
Well, if you read the law though, Tim, lots of record are grandfathered in until they're sold. And when those lots are sold, they go under the new law of the land, which is-
No, a lot of record, a lot of record is a lot of record. If it was generated or created before the ordinance that was in place at the time or the ordinance now, it's considered a lot of record.
Well, if you read the law under the shoreline management, it's, anything sold is, they've lost that right. They need to buy two lots. This is an environmental lake. They're not supposed to be pinning these cabins up like turbolift. That's why they come out with new laws, to prevent the look of the nature being destroyed.
So speaking of shoreline management, let's talk a little bit about those grants that you've heard or questioned. You had the printout that was a state earmarked dollar amount that the legislature allocates for statewide. Currently, Clay County receives $2,944 from Minnesota DNR for Shoreline Management Program Administration and $21,600 from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the ISTS, SSTS Septic System Program Administration. So Clay County is an active enforcer of its subsurface sewage treatment system from Ordinance 2014-1, Stormwater Management Ordinance 2015-1, and the Clay County Development Code Shoreline Regulations, Chapter 5B, which are the laws in which our jurisdiction lies. So that clears up the dollars that you thought Clay County had.
No, that's, you're not getting into the intergovernmental where you're putting all this money though.
This, this is from our auditor's office.
I know, I got that same information from her. You're only giving the amount that you're putting to that project, the shoreline management, 3,000. You're getting $3,700,000. three thousand, you're getting three million, seven hundred thousand dollars every two years.
We are, that, this is what you asked us to look into for shoreline management dollars, what we're getting.
Well, I have the information right here where the money, those tens of millions are going.
Brian, you had a conversation with Lori Johnson, our auditor, you can look at that, you know that budget closer than I, but we did look this week into specifically what dollars Clay County has.
And and Madam Chair, Mr. Burnett may be referring to the three million dollars that we get in general program aid and that is broken down between, I'll say, ten to twelve different departments. And so that like the twenty-six thousand dollars, the three thousand, she takes some of that money and breaks it out to the different departments that it applies to. So that's what we're talking about. So if we're talking about that three million dollar figure, that's general program aid that gets broken down amongst the different departments.
Well, you're putting it in and I see where you're trying to say there, but unless you'd like to look at this. It definitely shows where all that money's going for natural resource, soil and water.
Yep.
And it's it's tens of millions.
And and Madam Chair, if I may just follow up with that, that our auditor breaks that down when it comes into the county, but then annually, the state of Minnesota audits all of our books to make sure that the distribution is divided up according to programs and things. So there is a check.
So one of the best things, I think maybe.
That's legal to, excuse me, Ms. Burnett. But it's legal to do.
No, excuse me. One of the best things you could probably do, if you think we're not allocating the general fund dollars in the way that you think, I don't believe I've seen you at our budget evening when we talk about how our our budgets are allocated. And if you're thinking Clay County needs to spend more of that dollars specifically on shoreline management, we welcome your input on that. But this is the current allocation, what Clay County puts towards those two programs.
Okay.
So do you want to talk about the alteration of property lines?
Well, I'm not done with the bill. The permits, I mean, we've only went through one property and that's number eight and there's so many violations of shoreline management on number property eight that since two thousand fifteen, Tim, where are you? I'm still here.
Same spot.
We started, I called you with that bolt and the digging and the lot eight filled with land three feet higher than lot seven.
So are we talking too about the violation that you parked your excavator in the middle of the ditch to block drainage? I mean, if we want to talk about all the violations.
This is the property across from that.
So you're exempt from that.
Pardon me?
Are you exempt from your violations?
Am I exempt from what?
The violations that you have committed as well.
What violations have I committed?
Well, by parking your excavator in a ditch and not allowing the township to put their culvert in. My point is, we're trying to find a solution and you're not helping us facilitate a healthy discussion.
Well, if somebody here knew the law, absolutely, I'm talking fact. And, you know, I know why my grandfather used to build his corrals in squares and not circles, because that's all we've been doing is running in a circle. And I'm not the only one.
Again, if you feel that we're not following things, you always have the opportunity to seek counsel on your own behalf. I mean, we we vetted this out, Mr. Burnett.
It's not been, you're you're just saying this stuff, but you're not talking fact about law.
I've given you statutes.
I mean, would you, would you like to have a ship dug in? I'm not sure where your neighborhood is. Or your neighbor build your their land up three feet higher than you and shove all the water to you? Or somebody fifty feet up a hill tears the whole hillside out without a permit and drains the water to three other people?
With a permit.
I mean, come on.
All right, clearly, you and I are in disagreement on the property requirements. I think because it, a county board-appointed committee approved those variances specifically on eight and nine, that I think that's justified.
Well, county board, it's got to be approved by Department of Natural Resources.
So let's talk about the alteration of property lines, which they chose not to show up at that meeting. It's the same thing that happens with gravel pits in the county. Anything that's advertised that has to do with that is advertised and sent to DNR. If DNR chooses to come and comment, they did, was DNR present at those two meetings?
I don't know if DNR was present. Our requirement is to notify the Department of Natural Resources when we have something going on in the shoreline district.
Can we get, you got those documents handy?
Those what?
Would you have that, those contacts, those documents handy? That you did contact the Department of Natural Resources to see if they'd allow these people to build that close to the lake and that small a lot?
The point being is, we contacted Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Since we've adopted shoreline management regulations, the Department of Natural Resources is at an arm's length from shoreline management regulation. They have delegated that down to Clay County. If they have a major issue with something that's being proposed in the shoreline district, they will voice their issue and, you know, if if they say, well, we think you should do this and the county opts not to, they have the right to appeal and and take the county into court.
Okay.
How many years have the county been taking care of shoreline manage?
So the number eight variance, if I'm looking at my notes, happened in twenty thirteen. So that you can you can research the advertisement that happened on that to see that it was advertised. It happened on September seventeenth, twenty thirteen. That next variance was on the seventeenth day of March, twenty fifteen. So you're more than welcome to research the advertisement that happened for that.
Why wasn't there any shoreline regu- regulations in the permitting process?
I think that buffers back to the the shoreline management laws that are the state's purview. In my first answer that I gave you.
You were being paid by the state, correct, and federal government to manage these laws?
Right, with, under certain, under a certain thing. You're you're, what you're doing is you're twisting our words and so that's.
I am?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, you are. So what we're saying is there's a certain amount that we do, but there's also a buffer that buffs it up to the state and that's the state's regulation.
Well, anything over ten cubic yards of movement of earth is the county's ordinance, correct?
No, not if there's a construction activity. If it's in conjunction with a permitted construction activity, it's exempt from the ten cubic yards. And that is county ordinance eight dash five B dash twelve subdivision A. Grading and filling and excavations necessary for the construction of structures, sewer treatment systems, and driveways issued validly, excuse me, under validly issued construction permits for these facilities do not require the issuance of a separate grading and filling permit. However, the grading and filling standards will be incorporated into the permits for construction of structures, sewage treatment, systems, and driveways.
That just answered my, will be incorporated in to the permit. Have you ever done that?
It actually, it justified ours, actually. Her answer justified our action.
It doesn't mean it's exempt from doing it. It means it had to be incorporated into the building permit, which you guys saw.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What what is the concern here? What what is the specific concern, that Tim's not doing his job or is there a specific complaint on this plat up here?
Both.
What is the specific complaint? Now, give them something that they can answer.
You can't just give somebody a permit and let them tear the land up.
Brian, give them something they can answer. You're you're just, you're just all over the board with this. Be be specific that you, show the board some courtesy and give them something that they can answer.
Well, I need to have an answer. It's Tim, can you?
Ask the question.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Brian, you don't seem to like our answers, but they are our answers. And you, let's go through the remainder of your questions.
Okay.
We're running out of time.
I understand.
Let's go through the remainder of your questions.
Number three was your alteration of property lines. Property lines have been altered on permits. Lot seven, you claimed was seven feet, what had been added. Lot eight, thirty-five feet have been added and lot nine, forty-nine foot have been added.
Correct.
Okay. So the answer from staff is that what an applicant writes on their applications does not have any legal significance and certainly does not convey the rights of ownership. It does not change what the official property lines are. The official lines remain as what is reflected on the recorded plat. So for instance, if I, when I went in and got my building permit for my home and gave it, just said I was to the west of the volun property and gave general specifics, what I wrote was not a legal bind because when I went to get my recorded plat, found out that it was actually a half of an acre short of what I thought it would be. That is what is legally binding these.
Well, when they changed the road and I get accused of moving the road and then because of all the people that.
Are we talking about eighty-sixth Avenue now?
Correct.
Okay.
And then they tear out all my grass that's been there since we've been there thirty-four years.
Okay.
And start and move, trying to move the road over because of this chasing these property lines that have been given to these individuals.
I don't, I don't believe it's given. I think what you need to remember.
Well, land ground, whatever you want to call it.
Excuse me, it's what is recorded in the plat.
Madam Chair, it's, please, Tim, the, when somebody comes forward with a permit application and when it, when it comes to property lines for the purpose of meeting setback requirements and all the other issues that you deal with based on where property lines are, you do not use what an applicant necessarily says is his lot size. You use the recorded lot lines, don't you?
Uh, if there's a question that we we note or notice, then we'll go back to the recorded, we'll go back to the plat and see what it says. Property owners, we make an assumption that property owners know where their property is because we don't go out and survey it. We don't go out and take a metal detector and find their pins for them. We've never done that, so. Well, if if there's a question about the size of the property, we'll go back to the plat and check on that. If there's not, then we do assume that they know where their property lines are and their pins are.
Mr. Magnuson, when that happened, was there a discrepancy because there was a thought that pins had been moved on what was the recorded plat?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So do you want to talk about eighty-sixth Avenue?
Yes, I do. Here's, here's a copy of, I don't know if you've got, if you've reviewed these, the property lengths that were written on.
Which is what we've, we're talking about, those are no legal significance, but you're welcome to pass it around.
Is there anything that's a legal significant?
Yeah, what's legally significant is what's.
Well, he should be checking.
Excuse me, Mr. Burnett, what is legally significant is what is recorded as your physical plot property. That is legally significant. And if you were to accidentally write a different thing on it, it would be whatever is legally binding by what is recorded. That is yours. These belong to other landowners.
Correct.
Yes, and I don't see them coming in here and complaining about the size of their values.
Well, that's because they gave, he gave them my land. Why would they be in here complaining?
Because that land wasn't legally recorded as yours.
Well, he put sewer systems in it.
It wasn't legally recorded as yours. If it's not legally recorded, then we're not bound to that. Just because I want to move my tree line fifty feet to the west doesn't mean it's mine. I can't claim it. And thank you very much for taking care of it, but just because you took care of different areas does not mean it's yours.
Well, when you, they, you don't understand it.
I am very clearly understanding, very clearly.
Oh, very. Well, have you, okay, let me just lay out the difference in the property lines.
We're running short on time because we still have several things. So if you'd like to talk about that quick, that's fine, go for it. But I'd like to address the other issues that you have.
Well, we got to get done with one of them because you're just telling me all this jumbo jumble, but it's not the facts.
From our perspective, we've quite clearly explained the position of the county on these things.
Just take, take it to court, right?
If you don't like our answers, I'm sorry, that's your option.
That's an option, yes.
So let's talk about eighty-sixth Avenue.
Unless you give me the attorney.
Pardon?
I dated attorney, you guys should supply it. I'm a civilian trying to take care of these issues with the county.
If you'd like to take issues on your own property, that's one thing. This is not yours.
Could you look at these?
You cannot claim something that's not yours.
So, Tim, you don't look at the regular plats when people bring it, they can just add whatever they want to these applications and you don't look at the standard plat to make sure these, these lengths and whiffs are proper when you issue a permit?
Not a hundred percent of the time, no.
Why not?
I guess I didn't feel the need to.
So you.
And I guess that I have a question for you, Mr. Burnett.
Do you understand the the problems we went through because of this?
I don't.
Well, you've destroyed a neighborhood. You've turned neighborhoods against neighborhoods.
Excuse me, Mr. Magnuson has not done that. He's done what has been directed to him by ordinance. This does not fall on him. He's not going to be the martyr for what your disappointment is and how things have turned out there. Okay? Let's talk about eighty-sixth Avenue.
Well, you can't give property to other people just to make their lots buildable.
Your question, I'm very close to just dismissing this conversation. You'd like to talk about eighty-sixth Avenue?
We're not done with it by any means.
That's why I said, let's talk about eighty-sixth Avenue.
We're running out of time.
Okay, no, so your question was, were we under the assumption that eighty-sixth Avenue had been abandoned by the township? That was one of your questions?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So, no, that was not the understanding. Eighty-sixth Avenue is a dedicated public right of way and as indicated on that original plat. It is our understanding, the road remains in the public domain and can only be extinguished by the abandonment through the legal process initiated by the township. And that is not a process the township has entered into.
Why did they, why did the county then issue sand sewer permits to be put in the right of way?
That's the the question before, A, that you posed to number four. And the systems on those lots, they were small lots and there was no other place to put the sewer systems. So they were allowed to be there and the township has consented to them being there.
That's not true.
It is true.
Lot number two had plenty of room and it's in easement.
Well, we, we weren't talking about lot number two. You told us eight, nine, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Well, Paul wants to know this. He's on lot two, all the jobs.
Well, Paul was at the meeting with the township and the township indicated that they would give all the landowners that have septic systems in the right of way, that they would give them an easement to use that piece of property for the life of the system. So there's no controversy between the township and those landowners.
Certainly, what happens if the system fails and they have to replace it?
Then he needs to put in a new system and if the township is okay with him replacing it in the same spot, then that's between him and the township. And if the township is not okay with him using their right of way, then he's going to have to find a different place to place the septic. So that, that's the answer. And it's not anything that is affecting you, Mr. Burnett, it's not on your property. And no one else is here complaining about it.
Well, they sure would be, but they all have jobs to go to. And unfortunately, they couldn't make it today, they're going to try, but being out this Easter.
We got one more question there, urgent safety issue.
Do you want to talk about your urgent safety issue?
Well, there's many of them, but yes.
The one that you asked us to look into?
Yes.
Your question was on lot fifteen and sixteen. Along eighty-sixth Avenue has an area of excavation around two hundred cubic yards of dirt exposing tree rip balls, trees forty to fifty feet in height, causing possible, a possibility of potential collapse into the hillside. This is a safety hazard to residents passing by, power lines going down the roadway. So where is, where are those lots?
Across from eight and nine.
What's the names on the lots?
Okay, thanks.
That cutout is right in here.
Okay. And is that the cutout that we're talking about with the culvert?
No, the culvert would be down on the south end of the poly property. Cutout is to a little bit north of the, the right of way.
A safety issue affecting a township road and right of way needs to be addressed by the township. Subdivision residents always have their private legal rights as they can discuss with an attorney.
You know, there's state, how many ordinance that's supposed to be protecting us? Are we third-class citizens or what?
I think we've talked about how the ordinance protects you.
How do they protect us? That's Tim's job. He was there, when they first started digging that out in two thousand fifteen, I brought, Tim was there, I said, they can't be doing this. They're destroying this, you can't dig, you can't dig into a bank and just leave it for kids to be caved in on and trees fall on the residence. What do you, I mean, is that, what do you think? Is that proper? When the county's supposed to be policing these laws?
I believe I answered that this is on a township road. Commissioner.
So, Mr. Burnett, you know, we need.
So, Mr. Burnett, um, you know, we need, we, I think we've done everything we can to resolve this issue. Uh, you know, I'm satisfied that the board chair has gone above and beyond trying to answer your questions. The county staff has looked into all these things. They've done a, you know, and from my position, they've done an excellent job and they've answered the questions to my satisfaction. I can't speak for the entire board, but they've answered my questions to satisfaction. And there is nothing more that we're going to be able to do about this issue. We've listened to you for a number of weeks and we've tried to address your issues. And to my satisfaction, they have been addressed. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you've had your opportunity to address us. We've looked at your concerns. They've been answered. And so, you know, from this point on, if you want to, you know, if you want to pursue it, then you have the right to do that. But, you know, as from my perspective, I'm done listening to it, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Burnett, uh, when you were here doing citizens' comments, I, I had suggested that you call and get on the agenda and provide your list of questions. You've done that. And our county staff has, uh, has, uh, and as Commissioner Wayland said, our, our board chair has answered, uh, a lot of these questions. It's an, it's an area where obviously you completely disagree with the answers that you're hearing. That's your right to disagree with those. And you have your rights from here on forward on how you can remedy the situation if you feel is necessary. But I agree with Commissioner Wayland. We've given you every opportunity to raise your questions and we've given you answers. The fact that you don't like them is something we can't help.
Well, just the law ain't being followed.
Well, but, but this is, this is where we disagree with you because we think the laws have been followed.
Well, does the township give any permits out for people doing projects?
We're not here to answer for township issues.
I'm not elected to the township.
I know, but the township doesn't. It's the county that's supposed to be stopping this stuff from happening. And that's not happening.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Well, another waste of time in the service, but as long as you got to apply by these laws. It sure ain't doing it down here.
We're all entitled to our perspective. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to start activating myself.
All right, item number three, proclamation and report on child abuse prevention month. Amy Amundson Quinn Jager from Social Service Supervisors. Rhonda's joining as well. Good morning.
Join because I wanted to introduce you to our newest supervisor.
Good morning. Quinn Jager is, uh, our newest supervisor started here in early March.
Um, he is replacing Stacy Christensen in our Child Protection Unit. So Quinn is supervising, um, Child Protection Assessment, those, um, cases that first come into our agency, truancy programs. Um, Quinn has been an assessment worker in that unit that he'll be supervising. So we are excited to have him. So this is his first board meeting, so Amy's going to pretty much, uh, run the show, but here to talk with you about child abuse prevention.
Well, we brought some fun little trinkets and goodies.
We would have thought you'd bring those when there's snow flying through here.
And our thought process is we were going to put these up on Thursday out in front of our building at our Child Protection Team meeting. However, with the snow coming, I don't know if we'll get that done or not. But, um, just to let you know, we wanted just to bring forward the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation and have it reviewed. Just a couple of updates. Um, Clay County Social Services continues to meet with our Child Protection Team, which is a multi-disciplinary team made up of community agencies. Um, we meet once a month to do case consults of cases, um, education on new services and agencies within, um, Clay County and promotion and education of child, of, um, Child Abuse Prevention Month. So this month, we will be, um, putting up our pinwheels in front of our building. We've got some informational signs that will be posted throughout the county campus. And we do have a billboard that's put up on the corner of First Avenue and Eleventh Street, just recognizing that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Um, the other thing is, um, just some kind of exciting, um, updates as far as, um, our work in child protection. Is this year, we met both of our performance measures, which is timeliness of initial contact with alleged child victims and our caseworkers meeting their month-to-month visits with children in out-of-home care. So we met both of those, um, measures and brought in revenue to, um, go towards our out-of-home placement costs, which was exciting. And we also, um, in twenty sixteen, we had come to the board and talked about the huge number of children we had in placement, which was a total, I think, of two hundred and sixteen kids in out-of-home placement in twenty sixteen. And as of today, we have a hundred and nine kids in out-of-home placement. And we are diligently working with our, um, uh, adoption and permanency worker, which the board added for us, to help get the kids that are currently awaiting adoption, um, permanency. And so we have almost weekly, um, or at least every other week, or at least once a month, an adoption. We just had a sibling group of three adopted yesterday, so very exciting news. I don't know if there's anything you guys want to add. I want super fast. But maybe that's good because we were behind on time, so.
Nope, other than the proclamation? All right, well, I'm in the mood for reading today, so I will read the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Minnesota and Clay County. Whereas in the year twenty seventeen, Clay County Social Services completed three hundred and ninety assessments and investigations of families and licensed facilities, assessed five hundred and sixty-seven children for alleged child abuse or neglect, provided one hundred and sixty-one families with child protection case management, eighty-nine families with child welfare case management, and provided care and services for two hundred and thirty-five children in out-of-home placement. Whereas, child abuse is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that may cause lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of meaningful and trusting partnerships created between parents, practitioners, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas, family-serving, youth-focused prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people, encourage parents and youth to develop strong ties to their communities, as well as provide protective factors that reduce or eliminate risk by promoting social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas, we acknowledge we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to the promotion of children and families' social and emotional well-being in safe, stable, and nurturing environments. Whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Clay County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April twenty eighteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clay County and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live.
I approve the proclamation.
Second. I have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Welcome. Yep, our number four item is a request approval to fill a full-time vacancy for full-time juvenile counselor, Steve. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner Nurse? Uh, thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. Uh, we recently had a resignation in our non-security unit uh, for an employee who is moving on to some further education. Uh, and so, uh, we are here today requesting that we be allowed to fill that position and then, and backfill any position that would open up because of that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the position and backfill.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to fill a vacancy for a full-time corrections officer, Julie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I have a corrections officer who has put her resignation in. She's going to become a child protective officer for Grand County, so she's moving on in her career. Uh, this is an existing position. There'll be some slight savings onto the budget.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Then that little snippet of requests and that's due.
A little snippet? It's, it's not a little thing. Um, as we know, we're, have a new facility opening up here in September and we've had many discussions about the staffing that are going to be required. Uh, last summer, I was here for the twenty eighteen budget and explained the need for additional staff. Um, we've had many PIC meetings, many meetings with the Department of Corrections, and we've worked on a staffing plan, uh, with, uh, with a lot of effort. We've come up with one that will allow us to acquire a facility with, in keeping our existing services that we have. And, uh, there is some, uh, some things that we could do to reduce our budget. Uh, but first of all, my request is to hire fifteen corrections officers and one wrap officer. And that wrap officer was a recommendation from the Behavior Health Committee. And the fifteen officers are the officers we, uh, worked with the PIC and the Department of Corrections to, to, uh, we feel we needed to operate our new facility. Uh, a couple of things we were able to do to reduce our costs was to talk about STS. Uh, STS is currently the Department of Corrections function. We feel at the jail that we can operate that program, um, on our own with our existing staff. And if we did that, we would end that contract in December, thirty-first of twenty eighteen, and that would be a budget savings of sixty thousand dollars for our twenty nineteen budget.
Uh, I think it should also be noted to this board that a part of the PIC process is that we had proposed that you go back to DOC and request, uh, a lower amount of employees and to see if, um, to see if we could get that, that plan approved. And that was not approved. So, um, in order to, uh, run the new facility as proposed and as built, this is the, uh, only option in terms of what the staffing plan can look like.
On the sixteen, excuse me. Is this, what is this sixteen, what is that based on? A hundred and forty prisoners or a hundred?
About a hundred, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty. It's not full capacity. It's about the number we'll be walking into the new facility with.
Okay.
Our existing population.
It's not too late.
No, it's not too late.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, uh, also, uh, something else that we debated quite a bit in that process of, of these fifteen, um, we're looking at a, a change in, um, description of some of them and.
Sure.
And, and just, you know, for transparency's sake, to make sure that everybody's aware of this, uh, we're looking at, uh, changing, um, five positions from a lead position to a sergeant position?
Correct. We currently are budgeted for five team leaders in our facility. We need more supervision at a higher level, so we're converting, we're taking away the team leader spot and we're creating five sergeant positions within the facility.
And, and that, um, that change is included in the numbers you proposed.
Yep.
And, you know, we did, we talked about that at quite length. We talked about, could we get by with four, whatever. What it, what it boils down to is, um, changing from the lead to the sergeant. The dollar amount isn't real significant.
Wasn't most significant, no.
I just, just wanted the board to be aware that we did go through that process and we looked at the potential of having less sergeants.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
So I.
Commissioner Wayland?
Question on these, with the DOC. So this is their recommendation or what's the diff, I mean, when they recommend, that doesn't sound the same. It sounds more like it's a directive rather than a recommendation to me, so, as usual, from the DOC, so.
Right. Well, statute requires that we have an approved staffing plan to operate the new facility. And the approved staffing plan is the one I presented today.
And what happens if you don't comply with that?
Yep, and that's a great question. And what would happen is that we, we would have to, uh, look at our inmate numbers and once we reach certain levels, we'd have to start shipping out again. And right now, um, if we would go less, we would probably ship out approximately twenty inmates a day, so we'd be right back up to quite a bit of money.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, we did ask that same question in PIC and, uh, we wrestled through this for, I think, two or three PIC committee meetings before we kind of finally got it resolved. And, and part of that answer that we also got, it might not necessarily be that we would ship out, but they might also close a pod. I think is what, that was another one of your answers that you gave us as a potential, that we could end up shut down a pod, which then further restricts your ability to, uh, segregate where you need to.
Classify.
Classify and all that kind of thing, so. So we're kind of just caught between a bad place here with the regulations of DOC when it comes to staffing, so. So our, you know, our, our PIC committee, I think, ultimately, after wrestling with all this, I know, uh, Commissioner Mojo and I both had a real, we kind of had heartburn at the beginning over the sergeant deal especially.
That kind of.
Yeah, we did. We had, we had heartburn over it, but, uh, um, I guess, overall, it's probably going to be a good thing and our PIC committee did, um, fully support and recommend the approval of this.
And I know, we all know this in terms of what we're transporting, but to just hear that one officer alone last year, Scott Steppes, had a hundred and fifty thousand miles in transport. I mean, it, it reiterates why we built the facility we did. It is the size that it is. The money is being spent on it and it's, I believe, a, a sound fiscal decision to build that. But the reality is that comes with staffing restraints and, and this is just one of those areas that we are, are bound by. We're hopeful that you can be creative in your budget going forward to, uh, to help find dollars where, wherever you can.
And I, if I can, just real quickly before, one, one thing for, um, for the public to be aware of too. When, you know, we talk about hiring sixteen new people, um, it's something that we knew was coming even at the time when we first started planning for this facility. So, uh, we, we've had it planned for from a, uh, financial plan and budgeting plan. And, um, I guess I just wanted to reassure the public that, that this has been something in the works in planning for a couple of years now.
Madam Chair, that was, that was going to be my statement as well. This does not increase the budget. Uh, we, uh, both you commissioners were very sensitive to the fact that this would not be an increase in budget. In fact, we budgeted about five point five million dollars for twenty eighteen and we reduced that by five hundred thousand dollars during the budget process because we knew there'd be some transition dollars. So we're going to stay about that five million dollar mark, which is a, a very good target. So in other words, the cost that we were spending outside of county is, is coming back into the county. So that's a positive.
What are the wishes on this board?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Julie, I just want to thank you from this board for your leadership during this process. I know that, uh, growing pains does not, uh, adequately describe what you've gone through. So thank you as you continue to transition as we open.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Could you ask for clarification? Are, are we in agreement that the STS program will be ending at the end of this year? Do you have a second motion for that or?
We should have that.
Yeah, probably should.
I guess it says the, the amount will include the cost savings of not renewing STS, but we should probably have a formal motion.
Yeah, could I just ask a question on that? It's something that I did not ask in our, uh, you said it can be taken over. So are, are we looking at being able to do more projects or?
No.
Than what your, your side did before?
No, we're just, are looking at using our current work detail officer. He would take the individuals, he could take more individuals out and then he can apply STS credit to the, to the same work. They won't be probably doing the DNR access points and, like, leaving Clay County. All the projects will be within Clay County and be the same projects they're currently doing. So the churches, townships, fair, cemeteries, all those great services. So the churches, townships, fair, cemeteries, all those great services we provide. We just want to be able to apply the STS credit to that.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve that STS contract not being renewed.
Second.
And a second. All those, or any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, oh, Eric, you're there, sorry. Highway Department.
Morning.
Ryan.
Quick note for you. Morning.
Thank you.
This is just me today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you have the approval of the final contract voucher for Hagan Bridge, contract number 117.
Yep, so this was a small township bridge up in Hagan Township. It's just a three-span concrete bridge. Corby Contracting was the contractor out of Fergus. The project went very well. Township's happy. And the final amount to be approved is $517,401.23.
It also should be noted, the original contract was $533,770.10. So we're considerably under that contract.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, your dust control quote, it looks as though the quotes were open on Friday, March 30th. And you're going with the approval to approve, recommendation to approve the low quote.
Yep, so the new bidder, this is a new bidder for us, Northern Salt. And they're actually affiliated with the supplier, I believe, in the metro area. But they do have a new office here in Glynn in Minnesota. Dave and I did visit with them in detail about their plan, and we do feel comfortable with, with their operation. And the new price to be approved would be $1.06 per gallon, which comes out to 0.318 dollars per square yard.
Can you remember what our price per gallon was last year?
I believe last year was $1.08, so we're 2 cents cheaper this year.
And then, so you're not recommending a magnesium chloride at all, just the calcium?
Correct.
Do they work between us and the county? Or when a farmer wants dust control, now do they contact Northern Salt? Or did they, I mean, did we approve Northern Salt?
Yep.
Do they contact or did they go through you?
So the way we have it set up is we sent out a mailing list, all the residents that have went in on the past, so they can get that same contract price as the county. And we're going to be working with Northern Salt to do those mailings. And yes, we'll be contacting the residents.
How would, how would we, how would we ever determine if there's somebody who would like to start that hasn't been on it? So they're not on the current list? How do we, how do we deal with that?
So obviously, there's word of mouth, and then we also advertise on the county website. And we could put an advertisement in the paper too if that was desired, so.
I think some of the conversations I've had are people contacting township officers, and then the township then relays it to.
Yep, so we can make sure to have that communication with the township so they're aware.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
I have a question about the difference between the magnesium chloride and the calcium chloride. I might have missed the time that was presented. Can I get an update on that, please?
Yeah, so typically, we accept prices for both options. This year, I mean, it's basically just a different type of chemical. It does similar thing. But the cost for that magnesium came in a little higher, so that's why we're recommending the lower.
There's no difference in effectiveness between them?
Uh, I mean, ultimately, they do the same thing. I believe you have to put the magnesium chloride down in a higher concentration to get the same effect. But yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. We did have a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, Jenny thought we did, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't hear.
You didn't?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Frank to approve Northern Salt as the.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
All right. Back on track, Kathy. You have a request approval. Good morning, to fill a vacancy for a public health nurse. All right, who's going to kick off?
All right. We have a retire, retirement with our public health nurse home visiting manager for one of our Nurse Family Partnership Home Visiting Programs. This is a requirement of the program. And because she's retiring in first part of June, we have some training in May. So we do need to get someone on board for those, the national training. So we're making the request to fill that position. It's a full-time position. You can see where the revenue supports part of the position. We also have the contract with Polk, Norman, and Menomen. We provide management to those nurses that provide this program in those counties. So that's reimbursable by that contract. If we have an internal candidate, we, you know, certainly like, if an internal candidate is hired for this position, we'd have to replace that person as well. So that is in addition to the request.
And you're allowing two weeks of overlap, correct?
Correct.
I have more approval with that.
We have a motion to approve, a backfill, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Ready, a discussion on pollinator habitat project on Clay County-owned land. Good morning.
Morning.
This is Tony Nelson with Pheasants Forever. Amanda, and then.
Stephen Burick with Pheasants Forever as well.
All right, Tony's going to kick it off.
So, good morning. First of all, thanks for the opportunity, for letting us kind of come in and sort of present this a little bit. So a little bit of the history here. We've, within the office, the Clay-Sonewatt Conservation District Office and, and Pheasants Forever partnership with that office and the state of Minnesota have, have been kicking around some ideas to propose an opportunity or an option for some of the flood buyout properties within Clay County. And so through some of those discussions within the office and then discussions with Commissioner Mojo and/or Frank Gross as they had sat at our, at our SWCD board meetings, we've kind of come up with some ideas or some options to be able to do a little bit of restoration out there and/or provide a, an option or some value associated with, with land use out there on some of those properties just south of what I call the Convent Road down in, south of Morcat. I believe there was a, there was a handout that I sent earlier, and you guys may or may not have had an opportunity to take a look at that. And so generally, our proposal is that we'd like to go in there and provide a couple of different levels of restoration out there on those flood buyout properties and establish native upland pollinator habitat and/or in partnership with river keepers, which we have not confirmed yet, I should say at this time. We're, we're meeting with Christine this afternoon or later this morning, to be able to establish some trees along the, along the floodplain area. And, and just sort of, I guess, sort of reclaim the red in those areas where you guys have bought those properties out.
So this is something that I've met with you all a couple of times on. We did take this to the county-owned property committee last week to discuss it. And part of what we're up against, and you all know this, but just for the public's understanding, is that these are lots that were bought out, flood buyouts with county dollars, or state bonding dollars. And so the requirement for Pheasants Forever, but also the reality for Clay County is that we cannot sell these properties because of that, that pot of money that was used to buy them out. And so we're, we're kind of stuck with them. And in discussion with the highway department, it's a little, little bit of a maintenance nightmare for them to continue the upkeep on all these, the spots of property countywide. And so this offers the county an opportunity to have another agency come in, improve the condition of the land with partnerships with not only Pheasants Forever, but Extension was interested in it. University of Minnesota would like to have some field studies come out and kind of do some, some counts, I guess, on that. But from my perspective, and the reason that I kind of requested we move this to this board is that I felt that it was a way to improve the quality of the land as it is. That's kind of been, I don't want to say an eyesore, but there are, it's kind of, there's been some garbage dump issues and weed issues for the soil and water to kind of get in there and spray. And so that's why we're presenting this today. Do you want to talk a little bit about the funding, the grant funding that, one, we applied for, but two, what Pheasants Forever typically does?
Sure. So Pheasants Forever received a grant from LCCMR, state of Minnesota, for a bigger bee and butterfly pollinator project. And so we're doing pollinator habitat throughout the state of Minnesota, working with other counties, parks, rim, rim ground, crap, you know, land that's permanently protected is what we're targeting. And so we have, we have this pot of money now that we can do these enhancement restoration projects on and, and build more pollinator habitat with. And so that's, I guess that's where the application is coming from. We also partnered with the University of Minnesota on this grant. And they would like to do research on, on some of these sites, if, if that's something you guys are interested in. Kind of a presence, absence of pollinators, you know, if they're using our restorations and how we can tailor our, our restorations going forward to best, make best habitat for pollinators. You know, do we have the right forward density? And kind of asking those type of questions.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think this is, I think this is an excellent idea for, for these lands. Now, if you were to come here and you would want to talk about pollinator issues that deal with our county road ditches, it might be a different story. As you know, that's, that's something through our Highway Tracking Committee or Highway Meeting at, at the MC level, there's, there's some currents. We understand the need for pollinator areas. That's clearly important. And so I, I think this is an excellent opportunity. My, my only question would be, because this is right up next to tillable land, is there, are there any issues regarding what, what farmers use on?
Sure, that's a legitimate question, sir. We, you know, there's always challenges that are associated with sort of your traditional or conventional farming methods. We, we expect any and all, you know, landowners to be responsible with, with the, the methods and the techniques that they're using out in the landscape. We've seen circumstances in the past where we've incorporated pollinator habitat and/or upland restoration, the same type of, of restoration that we're talking about here across the landscape on, on other types of like conservation reserve program lands, just other, you know, general public land restorations. And we haven't noticed a significant challenge that's associated with that. I'm, I'm sure that's kind of what you're getting to.
Yeah, I guess my, my thing was, you know, if these egg producers are using, you know, approved.
Chemicals, sure.
Chemicals. Obviously, we're also close to the river, so I have concerns about, about certain things that could go to the river. But I just want to make sure that, that we're not approving something that's going to later suggest that they have to change their ways.
No, I don't think so. I think if anything, this is potentially going to benefit some of those landowners, you bet. And it's going to benefit the resources that are associated with, with what we're doing out there, the water quality. You know, in, in some small part, we're hoping that, that the restoration types that we, that we're discussing here are going to provide some filtering capabilities out there. Native grasses and native forbs or flowers, if you will, are, are very good at providing bank stability. So, you know, there's always, there's always risks that are associated with any project that we take. And I think that, that the risks that are possibly presented with, with conventional methods and/or, you know, other things that are going to possibly happen associated with this, they're, they're minimal. And I, I don't, I don't foresee any, any issues with us, you know, forcing any changes or even recommending any changes for any conventional.
Part of the nice issue is that you do have a natural buffer with that gravel road anyhow.
You bet.
I know some farmers do where it will spring.
Sure, yep. I don't foresee, you know, I don't know if Steve's had any, any experience with this, but I, you know, just based on what we've done in the past.
Any other questions?
So you expect this butterfly, you put butterflies in there or do they just naturally come there? You got to put a sign up and butterflies, no?
We're going to say, we're going to put a sign up for rent for butterflies, and we're going to invite them to come in and check it out and see if they like it out there. It's sort of that philosophy, if you've seen Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come, kind of a philosophy.
Okay.
So hopefully, what we'll do is, is go out there and we'll do a, a certain level of restoration on the back there. You, I provided sort of a draft or a sample seed mix of, of some of the stuff that, that we're potentially going to put out there on the landscape. And all of those, those species of grasses and wildflowers are beneficial to pollinators and butterflies and bees, and hopefully they'll take advantage of it, as well as deer, turkeys.
Let's talk about cost really quick.
Sure.
So Pheasants Forever has, I believe, what is the dollar amount? Seven, or what's, what do you have per acre allocated?
Um, it's, for the average of the grant, it's 800 per acre.
Per acre, so.
And that can be flexible depending on projects and.
That is something that's been applied for. And the cost to the county at this point is just serving as a host. So there's not, there's not a cost to, to us paying for the seed or whatnot. And I think it should be noted that as a general rule, the public can go on the county-owned properties as it is. And so I don't believe it changes the, the, that access at all either, so that's important.
It, it should be mentioned that, you know, as, as we move forward with this, and we would consider this a partnership that, that we may call on the county to.
Frank will be there with a sign to welcome the bees.
To. And not necessarily financial support, but just support, you know, from the perspective of, of expertise, maybe from the highway department or from, from.
And the SWCD, I believe, is, is well aware of what that is.
You bet.
Is there, is there help from you guys on the trees?
Any further discussion?
One last question. Because this is DNR purchased land or DNR funds, do we have to get their approval?
I actually talked to Commissioner Landwehr about this two weeks ago. And, and no, we don't. And in fact, they're really excited that we're going to do something with it because they're, they understand the bind that the counties are under. But it's not, the, DNR doesn't want these lands. I mean, DNR doesn't want seven acres randomly in Clay County. It's not, not really in their best interest. So for Commissioner Landwehr, he said to be able to keep it local and have the local jurisdiction decide what to do with this public land is kind of the best option. So he was excited about the opportunity.
As important as bees are to our environment and to everything that we do, I think it's probably good that we have pollinator areas. I don't think a lot of people realize just how significant bees are to everything that we do. I would, I would move approval of the request.
We have a motion to approve the request.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say real quick two thanks to Clay SWCD? And Amanda for sort of getting this whole urban conservation thing going and, and sort of getting us involved and, and just sort of. of getting us involved and just sort of laying the groundwork, sitting around and discussing sort of options and opportunities. So, and thank you guys for giving us the opportunity too, so.
Fantastic. Well, let us know when we get that grant.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move into our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Okay, thank you. Last Tuesday, of course, after that evening, we had the Small Cities Meeting, which I think most of us attended. And it was, I think it was very, it was a very good attendance, and thank you to our staff for being there. And there was a really good dialogue with the cities. And thank you, Madam Chair, for organizing that. And I also had the, on Thursday, I was, I was there to welcome the media for their tour of the correctional facility and law enforcement center. And then yesterday, we had, we had our jail construction meeting. And I, it's kind of hard to just continue to talk about just how smooth it's going. There's just, there's nothing fur-shattering going on there. You know, we had, I'd reported that a week before, two weeks before, we had a tour of those facilities with the Morehead Business Association. And just in that timeframe to last Thursday, the difference that was, of work that was done in those facilities in that short timeframe was just amazing, how fast that's coming. We're down the home stretch here on this law enforcement center especially. I think they're all excited about it. But that's, I'll leave the remainder of that for our administrator to give the details of that committee meeting. But it's going really well, thank you.
Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday, the 27th, along with the other commissioners, I attended the Small Cities Meeting in Glendon. On Wednesday, the 28th, I attended the, along with, I think Commissioner Mojo was there with me?
Yeah.
The Great Northern Corridor Coalition Luncheon and Tour of the two great separation projects in Morehead, the one that's going to begin very soon here, the 2021st Project, and then also the 11th Street Project. And we had some of the so-called heavy hitters involved in this, including the head of the Railroad PPP program. She was sitting next to me on the tour. And we had the Commissioner of Transportation for the State of Minnesota there as well. So it was very good to get on their radar and see that they were all apprised of what the situation is, especially on the 11th Street, and what a big project those two will be, over $100 million between the two of them. And I'm very excited to get this 1 and 21st Street, 20th and 21st Street done that will benefit our community and our county greatly immediately, although it will take almost three years to complete. And then on Thursday, I attended the media tour of the LAC and the Correctional Facility and along with Commissioner Campbell, and that was a real eye-opener, very interesting. Nice to see where the sheriff and the chief of police's office are going to be. It was really an enlightening tour. That's all for me.
Good job. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I just, I forgot to report on one, and that was the Personal Issues Committee that we had on the 27th. And that was, that entire meeting was devoted to what we approved today, and that was the staffing for the new correctional facility.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
I too was at the Rural Cities Committee at Glendon. I was very impressed with the fact that the different cities that were there, you know, they're all reporting big subdivisions, you know. You looked at Dilwood, 120 lots, they're looking at, Barnsville reported extra lots, Glendon, I don't know, it was around 80 lots in that southwest subdivision, Holly reported some, you know. It was just great to see, and it all coincides with the report that our county minister handed out, that Clay County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Minnesota. I think we're rated number four, I think, so.
Over the last seven years.
The last seven years, so it's really, it's really good news, you know. We are growing up here, you know, and sometimes you wonder why are we adding staff, why we aren't doing this or that. We are getting bigger, you know, so we do have to provide more services to more, I mean, services to more people, so. It's good news, but it's also going to cost us, you know, in some cases. But hopefully all that money, I mean, they bring in more money too, but it's, it was just good news. I mean, we are a growing county as compared to some of the other counties that are losing people, so. And also, next, I attended the land management meeting on the pollinators. I guess we discussed that fully right here, so. And then last night, I attended the Holly City Council Meeting, and we discussed quite a few things on the jail. And then I also attended Felton City Meeting, City Council Meeting. So we talked about projects there, and that they have a few concerns about some roads and stuff that I'll talk to the highway department with, so that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Whelan?
I just ended construction meeting yesterday for the jail law enforcement center. It's already been reported, I think Brian will add more, so that was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the pick committee and appreciate your support on that. I know that was definitely something that we wanted to make sure at that level, we had vetted fully to have the best possible result in terms of staffing that new jail, so that's it for that. A big thank you to everyone, really, who attended that Small Cities Meeting. It's, I think, been fun to observe, as we've had four or five meetings now, how the word of mouth has kind of gone through the different communities for the first time. I think we had a few citizens at that, and it really is a great opportunity for these smaller cities, one, to not only bounce ideas and different projects off of each other, but to help understand some of the ways that the county can help them and their different challenges, and just the networking that it provides. So thank you to all of those cities and staff, again, that attended, and we'll look forward to maybe having some more people show up at our fall meeting. That evening, I also attended the Planning Commission Meeting where we approved a interim use for, request for aggregate mining in Park Township. It's something where there are several existing mines that are in operation. We had a fairly good travel route and proposal that was passed, and then we did discuss a little bit. There were some questions about the appeal that will be coming to this board next week. So that concludes that one. I did attend that Great Northern Corridor presentation, and I think for Morehead to be a partner city shows that there's been some tremendous advocating, I'm not sure who it was, their engineering department obviously does a lot of that, but to be a partner startup city is phenomenal, to have one of the only two startup projects is really important. And so as Commissioner Haney said, to have the Commissioner of Transportation come to attend a tour was an important, important thing. So thank you for Morehead for that. And then the county land management meeting right after that, that was a good opportunity to provide some discussion. Thank you for your support on that. It was unanimously supported by that board. Thank you to Mark Sloan, who last minute made some great, huge maps for us for that discussion, so thank you to that. And then it sounds like we'd like to have a follow-up meeting in June to maybe talk about the rest of this list of properties that we can't do anything with, that we get to host. So that was that. And then last week, I also attended some meetings in regards to the MetroCog Executive Director search. That concludes my reports. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I guess I have on my list is I sent this to you, I believe, U.S. Senator Tina Smith is going to be opening an office here in Morehead, and from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday, is she will be there. And I did forward this to the staff as well to invite them to attend and share their concerns. And I'm thinking mostly of social services. There's a lot of federal money, and the same with the Public Health Department. There's a lot of federal dollars that come through the door, and a lot of programs that they're in partnership with the federal government as well that we work through the state on. So encourage them to attend this as well. So just a reminder to you that that is taking place. Pick Committee has already been talked about in detail. The Rural Cities, just my comment, I think it was the best turnout ever, and the topics really flowed smoothly. It was really a good one, I thought. Nice to see. Great Northern Corridor, I attended that luncheon for that, and then we had the land management meeting right after that, so we had to hustle back for that in regards to the Frank, or Commissioner Gross's butterflies. So I'm glad you're going to be the welcoming committee for those butterflies.
I'll be there.
I'm glad to hear that.
Aren't you looking for a job in retirement?
Not really. The, we had a conference call in regards to correction doors and hardware, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the construction meeting. But it was about an hour-long meeting, talking about the different doors and door swings and height of the doors and the type of locks that need to be on them. Boy, there's, you know, there's just a tremendous amount of different classifications, and I think they've done a real good job of designing it and going through it, but there's still some, you know, errors, not in errors, so to speak, but improvements that need to be made, and we'll talk a little more about that. I had some personnel evaluations to attend to. And then last Thursday morning, I had a meeting with a gentleman that was representing MCIT. He was here to review all of the property that was in excess of $100,000 value. So, you know, includes the highway buildings and on campus here and things too, so it took a little time. And then Georgia helped me out there too. She took him around to show the different places, but we met for a while. I attended some of the media tour that the commissioners talked about. I think that went over really well. It looked like there was some pretty good coverage and progression coverage that took place, so. I get a little enthusiastic when we get in those buildings, so I get to stay out of them.
Oh, you're good.
And then Friday morning, I had a meeting with Nick from Construction Engineers, referenced some upcoming, or some cleaning up some change orders and getting those to you processed. We like to keep those current. Met with Julie and Janelle from Probation and Matt Zero yesterday morning in regards to the STS program as a follow-up to the pick committee to talk about that program. The construction meeting, just a little update on that, the heating element, you guys approved that last summer sometime. They're going to start working on that as soon as the weather improves, and that's a big deal to us. It's a lot of dollars spent, but it's going to be a huge improvement, not only for the correctional facility, but for the family service center and the juvenile center and things. So it's really, really a positive move. And just a side note to that, you know, we talked a little bit about the benefits of some of these projects. Well, with the expansion of the juvenile center, doubling the size, if you choose to go forward with that, we'll be talking about that next Tuesday, but that updates the heating plant for that facility as well. So there's a cost that is, I mean, you're spending about $585,000 on that, and it's really a benefit to all of those buildings, so that's really a positive, positive thing. The security grades for the air exchangers and things on the second floor, I talked about that. That's going to be a change order coming to you. We talked, we talked about that a little bit last time, that the plans had called for the security grading within the air circulation on the first floor. There was an assumption it would carry to the next floor. The bid was not inclusive of that, so that had to be included. It's not necessarily a mistake, but it's an oversight that needs to be taken care of. We did walk through, not walk through, I guess, on paper, but some of the doors that were on the janitorial closets within the secure area were not, they were commercial grade rather than security grade, so we'll be making some changes there in regards to that. We talked a little bit about that, so that'll be coming before you as well. And then we looked at some of the staff bathroom doors within the secure area, and they were going to have key strikes on them. The staff has said that, you know, they're carrying keys anyway, we can save some dollars by going with the, with just a key entry in a lock. So there's going to be a credit, a sizable credit for that. So there's some trade-offs in regards to that. Again, designed for the card strikes, but feel that it's beneficial to make them key entrance and saving some dollars. So again, there's a little bit of movement both ways on that. Also on this, I put them in your mailboxes, but it's the, we get a update of what the activities are going out two and three and four weeks, but every once in a while, and they did when they came to the board, Construction Engineers gave you the whole scheduling process. And if you look at that, the red line on the sheet is where we're at, and then the red bar, horizontal bar that goes to the right, is what's left to do. And that's not a very big distance. There's not a whole lot to do there. When you start looking at that law enforcement center, and you see that in about two months' time is interior finishings and startup is complete and testing, that everybody, I won't say it's getting kind of scary, but everybody is kind of shaking their head saying, it's here. We're on top of it. This is, this is, we're getting this done. And some of the members of the public, they just, they just say, I can't believe how fast this is, this is going. And I know the one gentleman we rented a house to, he comes in and he kind of shakes his head, and I can't believe the government can actually operate that fast. So it's kind of nice to hear those kinds of positive things. Had some meetings in regards to some personnel issues that, we always have that with the weekly, it seems like, a lot going on. And I just want to mention this, I guess, you know, last summer, every, quite often I would report that we had meetings on Lake 15, Lake 15, Lake 15. Now you're seeing what we were meeting about and all of the details, and most of your staff, Tim and the highway department, both engineers have been out there. I've been out there, Bruce Albright has been out there. We've met with Mr. Burnett. We've met with other township officials on different occasions. We've offered to meet in here again to try to settle this. And, you know, most things, we can settle some of those things and answer most questions, but this one we can't. So it appears before you in the form that it is. I apologize for it because it's confusing to the board, and you can't get straight answers and things, but there's been an awful lot of hours, Jenny and I've spent, and Tim has spent just hours and hours and hours on this issue, and so it's a tough one to track you through. So thank you, Mr., Madam Chair, that's all.
When you're talking about the jail, are we still on track with the, was it 1.8 million or 1.6 million sales tax? Is that still coming in pretty much on track, or?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, it is. It's, again, just to revise that, the estimate that the Department of Revenue gave us was $1.6 million, and that was for 2014 figures. We have been tracking about $1.8 to $2 million collections. But, you know, I have to qualify that, is that we started in October, and that included a couple holidays in there, so we would think that they would be up and hope, and we would expect them to go down just a little bit in the first of the year. But Lori assures me that we're on track at that 1.8 mark and reaching towards the 2 million. So yeah, that is, that is very, very good.
Okay.
Just, I did forget, I did meet with, Colin Peterson was in town last week, and he wanted to meet to discuss the Plan B diversion issue and our task force recommendations. So I met with him. Also to note, State Rep Paul Markward and Senator Kent Ekin are in the process of doing their city meetings. I know today at Barnsville at 2:30, Frank, then do you know when they're headed to the ?
Yulin at 11:00, Dilwood at 1:00, Barnsville 2:30, then Holly at 4:00.
Attend if you can. If not, anything else?
Okay.
If not, we are adjourned. Attend if you can. If not, anything else? If not, we are adjourned.